The eighth meeting of the 23rd Council will please come to order. All council members are present this evening. At this time, we will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and for our moment of silence, councilors and ladies and gentlemen, I wanted to have us all remember our good friend, Joe Green, who would regularly come down and we'd commemorate the Pearl Harbor Day. And Joe just passed away last week, so keep him in your thoughts and prayers.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign-up table. The council this evening will take a dinner break at approximately 7:00 p.m., and we want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks and please no outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go much smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are now under item three, that's Proclamations and Presentations. That's Counselor Davis and Counselor Gibson. This proclamation is recognizing Women's History Month. Here to accept the proclamation is Pamela Herndon, Executive Director of Southwest Women's Law Center. Welcome, and come to the podium.
Mr. President, I want to say thank you and welcome Ms. Herndon down. I know she has some guests here from the Southwest Women's Law Center as well. Would you introduce them for us, and we'll read their proclamation?
Yes, Counselor Davis, I'm happy to introduce to you our outstanding volunteer. Her name is Dottie Tiger. We also have our Administrator Pearl Clark and our Staff Attorney, Elena Rubenfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President, and my cosponsor, Counselor Gibson, is a little ill this evening, and so Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Penney is going to pinch-hit for us, and so I'll get started and let her finish, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Whereas the City of Albuquerque wishes to acknowledge the struggles and celebrate the contributions, achievements, and advancements that women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made to found and build our nation, our state, and our city in countless recorded and unrecorded ways; and whereas a century ago, most women around the world did not have the right to vote, and most in the workforce had little or no collective voice to advocate for their workplace rights; and whereas women have struggled throughout history to gain rights not only for themselves but for many other underrepresented and disenfranchised groups; and whereas the United Nations recognized that supporting the equal representation of women in governance will lead to a more just, peaceful, and secure world.
Thank you, Counselor. Whereas International Women's Day became an official event marked by the United Nations in 1975, and whereas former President Jimmy Carter urged that all Americans seek to understand the true history of our country as well as the need for full equality under the law for all people, in his proclamation for the first National Women's History Week, which took place on March 2nd through March 8th in 1980; and whereas our nation's women have played and continue to play a critical role in every sphere of life, constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working both inside and outside of the home, as well as establishing some of the most longstanding charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation, and -- which one?
Whereas in recognizing that despite of all the contributions made by women, their role in the study, teaching, and literature of American history have been consistently overlooked and undervalued, Congress passed a resolution which saw Women's History Week involve into Women's History Month in 1987; and whereas New Mexico has a long history of female representation in politics dating back to our first Secretary of State in 1923, to today when a majority of state-majority leadership positions are held by a diverse group of women, and now in 2018, here in the City of Albuquerque, 25 of 52 appointed administrative positions in the administration are held by women, and four of the nine council districts are represented by women.
And whereas in 2017, the City of Albuquerque worked to amend the city's purchasing ordinance relating to pay equity reporting and requirements for gender and pay equity preference for city procurements; and whereas Women's History Month continues to raise awareness of the importance of gender parity and the indispensable heritage from which we can draw pride, comfort, courage, and long-range vision, be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque hereby recognizes the month of March as Women's History Month. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I just wish to tell you that today, this month, is also in honor of Women's History Month, entitled Nevertheless, She Persisted: Honoring Women Who Fight All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. And that's exactly what the Southwest Women's Law Center does, and we sincerely appreciate this proclamation.
We'd like to come up and receive the proclamation. The next item on the agenda is item four, Economic Development Discussions. There is none this evening. We will move on to item number five, Administrative Question and Answers. Councilors, are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Benton.
Thank you. I don't think there's a need for the Planning Director to come down, but I have had a few questions from constituents about the sale of the Rosenwall Building, and so I was hoping perhaps I could get a briefing on that, and maybe we'd have a couple of questions and back and forth at the next council meeting, if that's okay. So just putting that out there, I don't know that we need to discuss it now unless somebody wants to specifically.
Mr. Campbell, go ahead and proceed.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, yeah, the Rosenwall Building, which is located downtown on Central at Third Street, is, the first two floors are owned by the City of Albuquerque, the third floor by an entity, a different entity out of California. We are currently in discussions about the disposition of that building. It has, as you know, cost the city some money for maintenance despite not having any tenancy in there. I'll be glad to give you more details about the nature of the issues in an appropriate setting.
And so there's a conceptual agreement in process, but it's not in agreement yet? Is that?
That is probably the most detail that I could provide on that at this time, yes.
And yeah, just the history of it is a long, a long and storied history. At one time, there was an intention, I believe, to have the Martin Luther King Museum in there and the Intolerance Museum, the Holocaust Museum, and there was actually funding appropriated by the state, one of these situations where money was put together by the state to make the purchase, and the city became the fiscal agent, and then we kind of got stuck and have been stuck for many years. So certainly appreciate the administration moving on it, just interested in the details of the deal.
You bet. We'll be glad to provide that.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just now here, if I could follow up with you very briefly. From time to time, we've been asking for some updates around the issuance of a contract or around the new cable franchise management contract. I know that's been an item of discussion for public access for a number of months, and the administration committed early on to trying to move that forward to a public process. Can you give us an update on where that is?
Sure. Council President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, it's actually, we have good news. The RFP for the award of that contract was posted today on the city's website, so anybody who's interested in competing for that contract can now look at the RFP and see if they're eligible. As you may remember, we did have some changes to the RFP intended to address some of the community's concerns about the amount of local programming, as well as some changes to the selection committee to include a community member, so we're happy to say that's up today.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions for the administration? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on. We are now under item six, that is the Journal. Council Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the March 5th Journal.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the March 5th Journal. Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under item seven, Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Harris, Sanchez, and Benton, Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the letter of introduction. Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I think there was a vote for immediate action on an item that you and Counselor Harris are sponsoring.
We already voted on the letter of introduction. We are under R-20.
Okay. So we move, go ahead. Okay, I move that rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R-20 on tonight's agenda for final action. R-20 is adjusting fiscal year 2018 general fund appropriations to provide for a 1.5% employee wage increase for fire union employees and amending the adopted capital improvement program of the City of Albuquerque by supplementing current appropriations for affordable housing projects.
We have a motion and a second. This will require two-thirds votes to move the rules, that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R-20 on tonight's agenda for final action. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed?
No.
That passes on a seven to two vote. So it'll be on the agenda heard this evening.
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the letter of introduction. Seeing none. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no. That passes unanimously.
Mr. President, I think that we did that backwards, and I don't know if it's going to have to be changed before that is, because we voted for the letter of introduction first, and then we did that, so there was a mistake made.
Mr. President, Counselor Winter, I believe since he had not announced the result of the vote on the letter of introduction, it would still be proper. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go and proceed.
Sorry.
We are now under Reports of Committee. The first one is the Independent Operations Committee, met on Wednesday, February 21st, and reports out the following items: in the matter of a request for $32,000 for the hideout, that'd be approved; in the matter of a request for $16,000 for arts escondido, hidden arts, that'd be failed; in the matter of the request for $16,000 for Atrisco, a community history, that'd be failed. I move, go ahead.
I think it was me. Or is it you? I make a motion to approve the Internal Operations Committee report.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. Counselor Penney.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, March 12, 2018, and reports out the following items: in the matter of 07, 12, R4, 10, 13, and 15, that they do pass; in the matter of R11, that it be without recommendation; in the matter of EC33 and 34, that receipt be noted; in the matter of EC35 and 57, that they be approved; in the matter of EC36, 37, and 56, that they be approved and be acted on at the meeting in which they are reported; in the matter of EC55, that it be without recommendation, that it be acted on at the meeting which it is reported; in the matter of 08, that it do pass as amended, I make a motion to accept the committee reports.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton to accept the committee report. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, March 14, 2018, and reports out the following items: in the matter of EC456, that it be withdrawn by the administration; in the matter of EC64, that it be confirmed. I make a motion to accept the committee reports.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. We are now under deferrals and withdrawals. Councilors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Seeing none. Let's move to agenda item number nine, Consent Agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Counselor, Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. We are now under item 10, General Public Comments. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light at the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, then the bell will turn yellow at that point.
Mr. President, do you mind? There's a couple of people, I think Patricia in the audience, who is one of the mayor's recommendations. I don't know if we just want to recognize anybody who is here.
Any of the appointees that are here tonight, would you please stand and be recognized?
Mr. Conni.
Congratulations and welcome. Okay, let's go back to General Public Comments. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light at the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, then a bell will ring indicating that you have 30 seconds remaining, and that light will be yellow. At the two-minute timeframe, the light will turn red, meaning your time has expired, and please respect the time. I would appreciate that. And this evening, we don't have that many people speaking under General Public Comments. We'll call all of you up at the same time. Please be prepared to speak: Don Schrader, Sue Flint, E. Ward, and Kathy Adams. And we have seating for you and available here at the front. Welcome, Mr. Schrader.
Do most college graduates live more wisely than minimum-wage workers who never went to high school? Do most college graduates travel less, pollute less, cause less climate chaos? Do most college graduates pay less federal income tax for war? Do most college graduates consume less, live more simply and fairly in our world family of more than 7 billion people? Do most college graduates take strong public stands against U.S. greed and wars? Do most college graduates take jobs that help more than harm? Sadly, hundreds of highly-educated scientists at Sandia and Los Alamos Labs spend decades designing weapons of mass murder. Gandhi said, "What worried him most was the hardness of heart of the educated." As long as the main motive for many students to get a college degree is to get much more money than anyone needs, big power, worldly prestige, higher education is no sure path to a better world of fairness and compassion for all people. I was a college dropout, but in the University of Life, I constantly collect wisdom on how to live and how not to live. I collect wisdom to live it every day.
Next speaker, Sue Flint, followed by E. Ward, followed by Kathy Adams.
I'm Sue Flint. I'm going to talk real quick about what I've always talked about, and that's the R1111, that derived from the R09263. I stood before you many times during the North I-25 Sector Development Plan. I stood before you when Ms. Lou Barr was being hailed as the one who gave the developers everything that they needed in the ABC-Z and the IDO. And I spoke on the fact that the property that was in question, which is my property, was used in the R1111. In the R1111, that was amendment, that was something that needed to be corrected, the North I-25 Sector Development Plan. That was never corrected. So therefore, everything that you did afterwards, including the ABC-Z and the IDO, is flawed because you have an error in there. This is the plat that was done in 1979 and then was brought up to date in 1983 that designates us as a site plan community. On this side of it, it tells you that we are a manufactured home on permanent foundation. This here is Debbie O'Malley 09263. When this went in front of the district judge, the judge didn't see this. And the judge didn't see this. What the judge got was hearsay with no evidence to prove in documentation or anything else when they mediated for you. So the judge agreed that the city did wrong by leaving Coronado Village out of the overlay zoning because it said that the adjacent property was also a mobile home park. So I just explained to you that we're not. So what I wanted to say is, I gave the administration the opportunity, as I've given you for six years, to listen to me and not tell me I live in a mobile home park because I own my home. And next week, it's going to be filed in front of the district judge, and there's going to be filed in fraud upon the court by the attorneys on record, which is for the city, which was Kevin Curran, Rob Perry, and then we've got the other side, which is Mr. Jones and Ron Bohannon. Thank you.
Thank you. E. Ward.
Mr. President, councilors, the Planning Department claims that the public has had the opportunity to comment on the IDO since October 2015. During interactions after the initial release, the Planning Department and the city council said that the meetings were for the comp plan or they'd deal with the problems with the IDO later. In effect, the ABC-Z team and city bodies deigned to entertain public and neighborhood concerns about the IDO only beginning last spring. The project team indicated that every public comment received a response. Typing something in one of the two response boxes in the comment matrix is not meaningful exchange, especially when so many of the responses were simply noted. Also, they highlight the list of departments and agencies involved in updating the comp plan and IDO, reinforcing what was presented earlier regarding the lack of community participation in the formation of the documents. City staff, affiliated agencies, and commercial developers decided what would be in the documents. The general public and neighborhoods were told what would be in the documents. The long-range planners, in their employment guarantee provision called the Community Planning Area Assessments, justify the elimination of sector development plans by pointing out that many had never been updated. First, the plans may be fine as they are. Second, that's the planner's job. They did not do this part of their duties for years, but now they will. Over a period of years, they'll go to grossly generalized geographic areas that they created without public input to find out what mistakes they made after eliminating the plans that affected communities or partners in writing. All the while, harmful development may proceed unabated. The IDO, as adopted, shifts 57% of actions reviewed by the EPC to the DRB or administrative approval by the Planning Department. As recent history shows, Planning Department staff cannot be trusted to follow requirements of the planning approval process. Public input and right of appeal should be restored. 018-6 should have full public hearing. Thank you. And I have something unrelated.
Your time is expired, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Five seconds.
Ma'am, Ms. Ward, your time is expired. Thank you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Appreciate it, thank you. Kathy Adams?
You cut me off, like, seven seconds. You cut me off seven seconds.
Will she cut off seven seconds? Okay, we'll give you five more seconds.
So now I'm cut off too. No, I just wanted you to explain item K in the consent agenda. Just explain what that process is and stuff with the PID, because it kind of looks like you're appointing yourself to a committee. And so I was just going to ask if someone could explain that whole process.
Yeah, we'll let the staff, our legal team.
Mr. President, the reason that you're listed as a sponsor of that bill is because you're the president of the council right now, and these more ministerial items are usually sponsored by the president. Also, the PID that's in question is actually in your district, so.
Correct. Yeah, it is in the district, so they do try to appoint somebody within the district to serve on that committee. Thank you, Ms. Ward. Kathy Adams?
Good evening, councilors and president. I'm going to read to you some sentences from the comprehensive plan. "Rich cultural places contribute to the quality of life and the mental and physical health of our community. Our key cultural landscapes and resources, including the volcanoes and Northwest Mesa Escarpment, the Bosque and Sandias, will be protected from the negative impacts of nearby development and preserved in perpetuity for future generations as priceless community assets." I want to read part of that again. I want to emphasize the verb "will." "Our key cultural landscapes and resources will be protected from the negative impacts of nearby development and preserved in perpetuity from the negative impacts of nearby development." Now listen to this from the comp plan. Counselor Gibson? Thank you. "Preserving, enhancing, and leveraging these cultural landscapes can be accomplished through zoning and regulatory standards for development within or adjacent to these areas. Interesting, where's the strong verb that will dictate action? Yes, we can preserve our cultural landscapes, but will we preserve our cultural landscapes? And more importantly, where's the strong zoning code that states those protections? If our current zoning codes are so terribly bad, then what is the reasoning behind immediate confirmation of a complete overhaul that we should be spending more time and dedicating more effort to perfecting? I ask you to formulate a better action plan. Citizens can contribute."
Thank you. Also in the audience this evening, we have Troop 270. I'd like to acknowledge and recognize Troop 70. They are here working towards their communications badge. Would you please stand and be recognized? Welcome. We are now under item 11, that's announcements. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be an Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Water Utility Authority meeting on Wednesday, March 21st at 5:00 p.m. in the Vincent E. Griego Chambers.
Counselor Benton?
There will be an Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Government Commission meeting on Thursday, March 22nd at 5:00 p.m. in the Vincent E. Griego Chambers.
Counselor Penney?
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting Monday, March 26th at 5:00 p.m. in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Counselor Borrego?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, March 28th at 5:00 p.m. in the Vincent E. Griego Chambers.
And there will be Wantabo Hills Estate Public Improvements District Board of Directors meeting on Thursday, March 29th at 11:00 a.m. in the council committee room on the ninth floor. There is no public hearings this evening. That's item 12. We are now under item 13, that is approvals. And the first item is item eight, that's EC55. That's Recommendation of Award to Presbyterian Health Plan Incorporated for a fully insured group medical insurance plan. I move approval. We have a motion and a second. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President, and we went through this a little bit at the FGO meeting, and I appreciate the chair's good idea to bring this forward to council, given the timeline. But I was hoping the administration could help us a little bit and just clarify some of the updates. I know Mr. Bakhter had given us an update. The questions we had basically were that in previous conversations out loud, the administration had mentioned that the premium increases were expected to cost the city about 6.1 million. This EC says they're expected to be about 7.8, and we had some, hoping for some clarifications both about the, how much of that is city share versus our partner municipalities that share our insurance. The other question, and just to get it all out there in one space, the other question was that we mentioned during FGO that the administration was in negotiation for the healthcare provider, and that there were a number of options on the table that might require larger money to maintain benefits or a lower amount of money for lowered benefits. And obviously, the council cares very much about how we budget for that and how that impacts our employees, and so we were hoping to get an update before we approve this item.
Sure. Yes, thank you, Council President Sanchez, Counselor Davis. Let me take the second part of that first, and then we'll have Sanjay come up and talk about the specific numbers. In any health insurance plan, the trade-off is always between the benefits and the premiums, and sort of where those two intersect is with the copays and the deductibles. And so while, you know, since it's still open, I can't go into the detailed details of that in this public meeting, but in general, the choice that the city has to make is between a pretty significant increase in a pretty significant increase in premiums, but maintaining the same level of benefits at relatively, pretty much the same deductibles and copays, or having still a significant increase, but a lesser increase in premiums that would be offset by an increase in deductibles and copays. And, you know, sometimes we hear that by changing the deductibles and copays, we can drive people towards lower-priced services. You know, if we increase the copay on the ER, maybe people will go more to the urgent care. I don't know. People have different feelings about whether that actually works or not. But that's the basic choice that we need to make, and we will, you know, we'll keep you updated as we go through that. But we're really trying to find the best balance that will leave us as a competitive employer and a good employer to the folks that are always already here while still maintaining cost growth for our budget. And then CFO Bacta wants to come up and speak to the numbers in the EC.
President Sanchez and Mr. Davis, the $6.2 million amount was just the general fund portion of the insurance premium increase, and also the funds which we subsidize in addition to the general fund. So that 7.8 million figure that you had heard was correct, but that includes the enterprise funds and also the other participants that we have. I hope that answers your questions.
Yes, and thank you very much. And, Mr. President, if I may follow briefly Miss Nyers' comments there. And so just help me a little bit in being sure that we're doing this in the right order. I know we've done this in years past, and I know we haven't had an increase in three, four years now, if I recall. But does the administration, will the administration come back and give an approval for those new plans or updates to the council? In other words, are we doing this in the right order, or should we allow the administration to finish those negotiations and bring that back for discussion? I'm just curious about that process and transparency with our employees as we move in the budget process.
Council President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, I do believe this is the right and customary order where the award, as between the two people who submitted bids, is approved first and then contract negotiations occur, and that final contract comes back down to council.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify for some of our employees that were in the audience who asked earlier today what happens to their insurance during all this, and thank you for that.
Are there any other questions? I have a couple of questions. My first question is regarding the different entities that pull with the City of Albuquerque. Have we discussed these increases with these different entities?
Council President Sanchez, I'm going to ask Mark Seitz from our Human Resources Department to come up and speak to that.
Go ahead and proceed, Mr. Seitz.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the council, yes, we had an entity meeting about three, four months ago. They too are going through their five-year forecast of budgets. So about four, five months ago, we gave them a pencil mark of about 15% increase, so they're aware of this.
And did we look at other offers? Because I know in the past, Albuquerque and the city, they had choices of Presbyterian, Blue Cross, and other providers. Did we not do that because of the cost is just too high?
Council President, Council President, members of the council, we just went through a request for proposal, and there were two respondents, Presbyterian being one of them, United Healthcare being another one.
Okay. Any other questions by this council? Thank you for your time. Counselor Harris?
So am I correct that the actual scope of the plan and the deductibles and the premiums and the, there's still, some things are still going to be negotiated? This is just kind of the award of the, of the provider without the actual details of what's going to show up and when we hand out the books and all that stuff? The actual details are still in the process of being worked out?
Council President, Counselor Harris, yes, we're awarding on the basis of here's what we have currently right now. We'd like to continue those services. So we've awarded on that. After we finish the award, we can negotiate the fine details of the deductible or copayment.
Okay, so how long before, because I'm sure that our employees want to know how long, you know, what this is going to look like. So about how long before we can actually advise the employees what's going to happen with their health insurance in terms of these particulars?
Council President, Counselor Harris, pretty quickly. I think we should have that within the next week or so.
And I have one more follow-up question regarding the, because currently, the City of Albuquerque pays 80%, and the employees pay 20%. Those percentages are going to remain the same based on the formulas that were calculated here. Is that correct?
Council President, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor for approval of EC-18-55. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes? Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under final actions. Item 14, and this is Item A, O-17-55. Counselor Winter?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a floor substitute that the council saw. The last council meeting is prohibiting city boards, commissions, and committees from organizing, sponsoring, advertising, or hosting political forums. This has been around a long time. We've kind of deferred it. And then Mr. Melendez helped do a floor substitute on that to make some clarifications. And I think the big, the big thing about this bill and the purposes, the major purpose, is that cities, boards, and commissions, they're not elected boards, and they should act in a politically neutral position. And I think that's, it has to be that way, or I don't think they'll be effective. And so that's what this bill does. So I'll let Mr. Melendez clarify.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Winter, the bill is a relatively simple amendment to the Boards and Commission ordinance. It would apply to all the city's boards and commissions, including the Police Oversight Board, those boards with more specific ordinances, and those boards that are generally created under the Boards and Commissions ordinance. And it specifically puts a prohibition on those boards from hosting or sponsoring political forums because they are intended to be politically neutral, they're not elected boards, and because the city resources that would be involved in those forums are not designated for those purposes.
Okay, is this the floor substitute?
It is a floor substitute.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for O-17-55 as substituted. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Counselor Winter? And it's already been?
Oh, we already, didn't we approve the floor substitute at the last meeting? So I urge your support.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's already been voted on. Has substituted, so we're good. Okay, let's move to Item 15, or Item B. That is R-17-261, and I am sponsoring that bill. This is, this is a nuisance dwelling or structure in need of abatement at 553 Dolores Drive Northwest, 87105, within the city limits of Albuquerque, New Mexico, is so ruined, damaged, and dilapidated as it to be a menace to the public comfort, health, peace, and safety, and it be required to be removed. I move approval. We have a motion and a second. I think we have Angelo Metzger here from zoning. It looks like that property has been deferred for the last two months, and we have a new investor that has made some tremendous strides with that property.
Thank you, Mr. President. Angelo Metzger with Safe City Strike Force. And I am here to tell you that the property has been rehabbed, completely redone, came out really, really nice. And it's just, you know, just, just goes to show you what can happen to some of these properties with just a little pushing and urging to go on.
Yeah, Mr. Metzger, I want to personally say thank you to you for working with the new owners of the property, that were developing that property. You know, they expeditiously moved forward. And at this time, I'm going to make a request for a withdrawal of R-17-261. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes? Opposed? Say no. That passes unanimously. And now we have R-17-262, and I'm going to make the same request. That it be withdrawn. We have a motion and a second from Council Vice President Harris. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. Okay, we are now under Item D, R-18-20. And Counselor Harris, Benton, and myself.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll go ahead and move a do-pass of R-20.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Harris?
And councilors, this was something that we were able to kind of put together. Initially, we wanted to honor our commitments to bring the firefighters back up to where they were before things, before the fiscal crisis, I guess, in 2009, 2010, where we had to pull back on a lot of our contractual commitments to employees, including firefighters and police officers. This actually brings us back to where we would have been if we had, were able to fully fund those, those contracts back then. And what was happening with this bill initially is that we were trying to find some funding, and we had to move money from ABQ the Plan into some social service contracts, and then move the recurring social service contracts into the firefighter races in order to make it pencil. But because the council increased the grocery receipts tax revenue, we were able to avoid having to do that sort of a double transfer. And in the process, we were able to work with Counselor Benton, who is very passionate, as we all know, about affordable housing, to find some funding also for affordable housing projects, which is more appropriate for a one-time funding from ABQ the Plan. And maybe I'll turn it over to Counselor Benton for some more.
Counselor Benton, then we will go to Counselor Winter.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think this turned out for the best. I know we had a delay, and firefighters were perhaps nervous. But I think we've, by having defeated the previous bill and coming back with this, we've, we're still preserving three-quarters of a million dollars for affordable housing and being able to tide ourselves over with the firefighter raise to which the council had committed previously. So as we all know, I'll, I won't belabor my standard affordable housing speech, but we do have a large percentage of our fellow residents who are rent-burdened, and their cost of housing greatly exceeds the national standards, which used to be 25, 30%. I think they're typically talk about 40% these days. But we do have a lot of neighbors who are rent-burdened. And despite our slow economy, the cost of rental housing is, the market is tight, and it is expensive to find a decent rental housing. So we've got a good track record using the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and this would allow us to continue to sponsor projects that will leverage outside investors in our community to build affordable housing. So thanks to Counselor Sanchez and Harris for working with me on this.
Counselor Winter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, this is exactly the same bill that was defeated on a 4-4 vote two weeks ago, except for the funding source.
There are some similarities. It's not the exact same bill. The issue regarding the affordable housing was not in the bill. There was a floor substitute that Counselor Benton was trying to introduce that also failed. But this is not the same bill. Counselor Winter?
It's, it looks like the same bill, except, to me, except for the funding source. The funding source was changed. And so where's the funding coming from on this bill?
Mr. President, Counselor Winter, so the bill before you tonight is actually using the same funding source as the previous bill that failed on a 4-4 vote. In that bill, we were actually looking to pull together enough recurring funding to maintain the raise for a full year and ongoing. And to do that, we were switching recurring funding for non-recurring and some of the social service programs. This bill before you tonight is simply just moving the portion for the last quarter of the fire raise, and then putting the rest of the ABQ the Plan money into the affordable housing contract. So it's just a bit different, but the funding source is actually the same.
Mr. President, so is this still recurring money?
Mr. President.
Or one-time money?
Mr. President, Counselor Winter, this is one-time money. And so the bill has a section that would make it the policy of the council to identify recurring funding and the amount to carry this going forward during the FY19 budget process.
Mr. President, so we don't have, we don't have recurring money at this point?
Mr. President, Counselor Winter, no. As of the FY18 budget, we do not have the recurring funding for this raise for a full year or ongoing.
Thank you. Mr. President, just one more question for the administration. I think, are we going into negotiations here soon for police and fire for raises for the upcoming budget year?
Council President Sanchez, Counselor Winter, yes, we are in negotiations with APOA and about to open with fire.
Thank you.
Any other questions from this council? Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask our CFO a question about this. I think he's, is he still here? Sanjay? Thank you, sir. So as a Chief Financial Officer for the City of Albuquerque, I, my question to you is, does this balance, does this make sense at this point in time for the City of Albuquerque?
President Sanchez and Counselor Gibson, no, it does not. It balances for the remaining of the year. So in 2018, it balances. But as you can see, it's a, it's a one-time funding source. And we are struggling to, to put a budget for next year right now. I don't see any, any balance that we have which could be used for this. So if, if this passes, that means the '19 budget is not balanced. We would be submitting you an unbalanced budget.
So in other words, we're already pledging GRT for 2019, from 2019, correct?
Counselor Gibson, yes, but not including this.
All right. Well, I remain opposed to this mostly for those reasons, you know, and the fact that, you know, we never made any promises for a 3% raise. This was discussed ad nauseam in, in our budget meetings. We did not reach the 1.5 mark for our grocery receipts growth. So, and that was the trigger. That's what we were supposed to be using. If we hit that, then we would discuss another 1.5 raise. That never happened. And I think that we're, we're really making a mistake here and going forward. You know, particularly when we have so many employees who work for the city making $30,000 or less, and, you know, trying to raise kids, you know, trying to keep roofs over their heads. And this is just a gratis move, and, and I can't support it. As much as I love Albuquerque firefighters, I can't support it. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also can't support this. I think we're foolhardy to put something in that we don't have a budget for in the following year when we're going to be doing negotiations very quickly with the Fire Department, we not being the council, but we being administration. And I think we need to wait and see what those negotiations are rather than putting in this amount for a very short period of time, not knowing whether we will have the money to do that on an extended period. And also, it does affect negotiating when we've already put in 1.5. Does that mean we have to put in another 1.5 above that? Does it mean, I mean, I think, I think this is not the best political, not political, not the best economic, fiscally responsible move, and therefore, I cannot support this.
Any other questions from this council? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second for R-18-20. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes? Those opposed, say no?
No.
That carries on a 6 to 3 vote. If there is no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.